Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. A regular meeting in the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 21st, 2016, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please stand in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
This time, moving on to Agenda Item 3, which is Citizens' Comments, and this is for non-Agenda items. The floor is open for non-Agenda items.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, I'd like to thank Courtney Barker for showing up at the County Commission meeting in support of the beach renovation. Thank you. I don't know if there was a resolution passed for that by this council, but that's besides the point at this time, but I want to thank you. And one thing I do have here is ADA compliance, and it prompted me, I've got a very busy schedule, and ADA compliance is very important for a person who's in a situation. It's something that enhances their life and makes it worthwhile to live. And I saw the picture the other day, I forget where, somebody pointed it out to me, in regards to utilizing an un-motorized vehicle to go on the beach, kind of push it along. And that's a good thing. But I had the unfortunate experience having relatives coming into town, and it was fortunate that they were here. Unfortunately, they rented one of those vehicles, and this individual relative has multiple They still want to have a handle on their life, and we rented an electric one, and they wanted to go to Pelican Park and enjoy it. Well, I walked along with them, with her husband, and we got there, everything was fine, and then we got on the ramps to get down. And it was a serious challenge, and ADA compliant, she wanted to do it herself, and that's understandable. We all want to function by ourselves. To negotiate those turns was impossible. It just wasn't possible. I would like the city to consider taking a look at that and see how that could be corrected going forward when it is, the structure is being rebuilt. And have a test drive in one of those vehicles. In fact, I tried it, I couldn't even maneuver it, and we all need to look at that. The other issue is, I do listen to meetings in the evening, various meetings, and one of the things, it sounds like the speaker system is working, but please, council members or board members, or advise them, there should be a memo put out there for them, to speak into the microphones, please, because when it comes through YouTube, it's ineligible, you can't understand the words that are being said. The third thing I want to talk about is the lagoon funding. And this is where I get into the city passing a resolution to go in front of the County Commission and stating that they support a tax increase, a property tax increase. And I can understand where the council is coming from to a certain degree, however, residents of this community, this corporate municipal entity, there could be those in favor of it, and those, there could be against it for whatever reason, and that's a process. But I do not believe it is right for a city to pass a resolution on something to take money out of the pocketbooks of a citizen, resident, taxpayer, blanket-wise, and make that resolution available to whoever is making the decision. Granted, the resolution should have been there that we support what Brevard County would be doing, however, the funding sources, it comes across as if you're reaching into the pockets of citizens and making a blanket judgment to the county commissioners or whichever body there is to just go ahead and take it.
Thank you very much. The buzzer just went off.
I heard it.
Thank you.
I was hoping that I could finish that out.
Please, I'll give you a few more seconds to finish.
I'm done now.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Courtney, Alan, can we check those ramps at Pelican and see how they comply with these, please? Very important. Thank you very much. At this time, the mic is still open for Citizens' Comments on non-Agenda items. Here are no further. Bring it back to council, going on to Agenda Item 4, City Council Comments.
I would just like to say, Mayor, I did attend the electric car, electric vehicle show there on Saturday and read the proclamation, and it was a very good turnout, very enthusiastic group that was there. Spoke to Dr. Fenton there, kind of reiterated our hope that the electric car charger at Pelican keeps getting plenty of awareness that it's there, and there was a few people that actually talked about they do use it on a regular basis, which I thought was really good. But again, it was a good turnout, I was happy to be there, and it was exciting to see all the cars and all the people that were there. That's it.
Thank you.
I just attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting last week, good turnout, and we had a good turnout in council since we were one of the co-sponsors, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended the first meeting of the Indian Lagoon Citizens Advisory Council. It's a position that the County Commissioner put my name in with a few other names, Advisory Committee for them, picked me to be on the council, which I was greatly appreciated. And in today's meeting, I was picked to be the Chair of that particular group, Indian Lagoon Citizens Advisory Council, which I am looking forward to working on. I'm the Chair, a gentleman from Martin County, since it's a multi-county board, is also, will be the Vice Chair. Was attended today, very interesting how they have this set up. Dwayne DeFree, very, very smart individual, set this up, and they're trying to get public input from every county, since we know every county will be slightly different. And today, they also extended the boundary that will cover the estuary program. It's going to take in a little bit farther north into Volusia County because of the impact that has on the northern part of Oregon. Very interesting meetings, there'll be more, and I will keep everyone informed on what happens.
Congratulations on that appointment, Frank, that's wonderful.
Appreciate it. Any further comments? One. Moving on to the City Managers' Report, Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 1st, at 7:30 in the morning, we will be hosting the kids marathon and half marathon at the Schecter Center. This is a, getting to be a pretty big event, not to be confused with the 5K that will be occurring this Saturday, which is the Surfside's 5K Run for Sun, or Run for Shade, Sprint for Shade, I'm sorry, which is a fundraiser for them to get shade structure to go over the new playground, which we assisted them in providing. The Lions Club and PAL are having their annual pancake breakfast on Sunday, October 2nd, at the Civic Center, so you could go running on October 1st and then work off all the calories that you worked to build up on the next day, and eat a pancake breakfast in support of our Lions Club and PAL. And that'll be here at Civic Center from 8 until noon. Tickets are $5, and you can either purchase them when you get here or purchase them in advance at the Recreation Department. I received a thank you card from a resident who used the fire department's beach wheelchair, and that was for their grandson visiting from out of town. I also received a thank you email from Bud Mayer, expressing his appreciation to the volunteers at the Police Department for the Stop By and Say Hi program. I received a thank you email from a resident thanking Lieutenant Frost for his courtesy and professionalism during a traffic stop. I think we're one of the few departments that get thank you letters after people get stopped for traffic violations. And we also had, right before this meeting, our first lagoon-friendly lawn contractor orientation class, where we had five applicants wanting to be certified as lagoon-friendly contractors. This is a partnership that we have created through our Sustainability Board and Keep Brevard Beautiful. Four of those lawn care providers were attending, attended that orientation class, and after that class, they will be certified as lawn, as lagoon-friendly lawn contractors, and we will be posting those companies to our Facebook page in hopes that that will help them gain some business, considering all of the work that they did in obtaining that certification. On Thursday, September 22nd, which is tomorrow, Brevard County will be holding a town hall meeting at the Gleeson Park and Community Center in Indian Harbor Beach. This town hall will be presented by Virginia Barker, and this is regarding the proposed Save Our Lagoon Plan and a half cent sales tax, which, or half percent sales tax, which will be on the November ballot. I just wanted to make sure everyone were also aware that, given yesterday's sewer main break and all the comments that we received, I had quite a bit of phone calls on that issue, we asked the county to also provide a presentation on that issue. So that will be done at the beginning of the meeting. So they will be presenting what their plans are for infrastructure replacement, how that's being funded, and also the plans on how they're going to replace that sewer main and the timing of that. So they've been working real hard to get a solution to that, and so they're going to be prepared to present that and probably go through a little bit of getting yelled at, but there's a lot of people that are very upset and angry with that, but we're hoping that that presentation will answer a lot of questions. I wanted to let you know also that our clinic, Employee Clinic, in a local agreement, has been moved a little back, so we're now anticipating a January timeframe. It's just difficult to get four cities to agree to an interlocal agreement that quickly, so we are now reviewing it, the latest rendition, but now, and we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about finalizing that, and hopefully we'll get that done to get the clinic open in time for January. And that is all I have.
Questions, Courtney, and I?
I have one thing, Courtney, not you, but I forgot to say, to the Lions Club yesterday, Chief, thank you very much, great job cooking, great turnout, you guys do a ton for the city and the community, and thank you for that.
Yes, sir. It was lovely. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Discuss Take Action on Roosevelt Avenue Improvements.
Good evening. I am pleased to announce the Roosevelt Avenue improvements and the street repaving projects have both been completed, have been completed for a little while now, a few things here and there that had to be buttoned up. But before you tonight is two deductive change orders. Both projects finished under the contract price. Our diligence paid off, so the Roosevelt project came in, and I had them broken down there. The Roosevelt project came in at a decrease of $79,221.95, and the paving project was $14,609.78 under the contract price, and that is considering that we did two extra streets as well, so. David King is here from Quinton, Alhaf, and should you have any questions?
Thank you. First question from council?
I'm going to say one thing about the project. I can't tell you how many people, who either A, live on the street, use that street, has commented on your staff out there, Alan, the job they did, Vert, how you guys handled stuff, and the final project, how it turned out, and how people, you go there, they're using that street more than ever, bikes, people walking it, so I think it's turned out to be a very well-done project, and thank you, and coming in there $93,000 under those two projects, great job.
Thank you.
Any questions for?
I'm just going to echo your comments, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of become one of those showcases of how to do this right. I mean, you guys really did well with this stuff, both of you and your team, so, thank you. I mean, I've heard it's over and over again about how well this all went, and how everybody was communicated, and how it was just a nice, smooth process, so thumbs up, guys, nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further comment from council, open it up this time, on Agenda Item 6 for public comment.
Ron Jagutis, Satellite Beach. I know there was savings here, but the savings are, are they based on the fact that, based on the original budget, or was the amount increased and we had a $93,000 savings over the estimated cost of the project?
The $93,000 is the cost difference from the bid amount, which was higher than the estimated construct, engineering estimate that we originally budgeted the project.
I understand, and what was the difference between the estimate and the bid amount?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, do you?
No. We could find that out.
All right. Well, I do, I do understand it was a big undertaking, and based on what I saw in prior meetings, there were some added costs to it, and I've gone down that road. It's a project. I'm kind of surprised in one area, I believe the west side, if, for whatever reason, I guess you call them Miami gutters, or whatever you call them, the sides, is that what I'm referring to? I'm kind of surprised that certain areas had some new stuff in there, and then it kind of looks incomplete. I'm just kind of surprised that you see a cut with something going in there, and then you've got these swaths that show the old, the old areas there. And I would have personally gone the extra mile and completed it that way, but nonetheless, it's a project, it was a huge one, and it has changed the street to better quality.
Thank you. Public comments on Agenda Item 6, the floor is still open.
Larry Whitney, Glenwood Avenue. I have a question about the fin, I'm picking up where he left off, I'm trying to understand something about the numbers. I'm making a statement, but it's really a question. You budgeted a certain amount for the entire project, and then a subset of that was Roosevelt Avenue?
Yeah, so we, well, we budgeted numerous projects out of a loan that we received, some financing. So we had a budget for Roosevelt, an engineering estimate, we bid that out.
Right.
The bid came in higher, the lowest bid came in higher than our engineering estimate. So we went with the lowest bid, even though it was higher than our budgeted amount. We received some impact fee money from the county, which allowed us to afford the project at the bid amount, and then the, but we came in under $93,000 from the bid amount.
Okay, so based on that, then you actually have $93,000 in additional money to spend? And if so, will that roll over to other improvement projects, or is it allocated for something else?
No, it'll roll over into one of the other projects from the loan that we received, the financing that we received. So that was included, the DeSoto Fields project, so it'll roll over to that.
So I see, I see the overall project with a timeline, and it could slide either way based on the way things come in?
That's correct.
Weather and all these other conditions, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor's still open on Agenda Item 6. Here are no further comment, bring it back to council, that a motion. Some move. A motion by Vice Mayor Bryumer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Any further discussion from council?
Can I just, real quick, make the comment? The, I wanted to make sure that people understood that we did not replace some of the curbing on Roosevelt largely because of cost savings. You know, because the curbing, although it looks older, is still intact and it was still functional, so we felt that it would, you know, we would be criticized for tearing out curb that was in perfectly good shape to be used. So in one, some instances, we could be criticized for not using new curb, but I think many of the same people who are criticized for that would also criticize us for going over cost and ripping out good curb, so just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think they did a great job on the project, like I said before, Alan, thank you. One more?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss Take Action on Resolution 977.
Resolution Number 977, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, expressing the city's support and intention to create within its boundaries the Renew Space Program, a voluntary program providing interested property owners with the opportunity to finance energy efficiency, renewable energy, and mitigation improvements on their property by repayment through non-everlorn assessments on their property tax bill, authorizing the mayor of the City of Satellite Beach to execute in their local agreement with the Florida Green Finance Authority for administration of the Renew Space Program in the City of Satellite Beach and providing an effective date. It's a reading of Resolution 977.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 977.
Second.
I have a motion by council, and, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bryumer, and a second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Floor is open.
Dale Abrams, a CRA resident. Solar is a great idea. I know we have a lot of houses in the community that have it, but I think people really need to take a close look at this because the loan is going to be attached to the property, and I did some research where for those people who are looking at wanting to sell their property, it has had an impact on that issue. The buyer has said, well, you either pay off the loan or you reduce the price of the property. So you need to, you know, it's a great idea, but you need to look at it very carefully, unless you're going to stay here until you die, you know, that's one thing, but if you're looking at selling your property somewhere down the road, it is attached to it as far as that's concerned. And I don't know if you all knew that. I mean, I spent a lot of time researching this, and they have some issues with this out in California and other states, and it has impacted real estate sales because of it, because it is attached to the property. And I don't even know, I haven't looked into the interest rate and all that kind of stuff as far as that's concerned. The federal government is backing this, correct? Is that how that's working?
No.
No? No. The federal government is not giving you the loan?
No, there's no one. This is the ability that the citizens of this town, by the state saying that we have to do this type of a resolution in order for them to be allowed to attach it to your everlorn tax. It's strictly up to the residents, it just gives them the option if they want to do it, that's all. If we don't pass this, then the citizens don't have that option. It doesn't mean you have to do it by any means, it's just an option out there to allow citizens to do this. Some people in our town have already done it, put solar up. It just gives you that ability to do it, no more, no less.
Okay, so Dana Blickley does get involved in this with the Property Tax Office when you get your tax, when you get your appraisal and your tax bill and Lisa Cullen also?
It's up to the individual who has the home, if they want to take this action on their home. You don't have to, you can go put solar, buy it outright yourself, get a loan anywhere else. This is just an avenue to allow a citizen's another method of paying that, and yes, it does go with the house.
Does this also apply to government facilities?
No.
So government facilities are not going to get any kind of benefit from this?
Well, the benefit is to the homeowners on this. The benefit is somebody who wants to have solar, okay? It gives them, the residential person, the ability to have another funding source or mechanism to put solar in. That's all it does.
I know the city has always been interested in solar on their facilities. Why is, why doesn't this apply towards government facilities?
We wouldn't be interested in this type of financing, it doesn't, we don't need to do this. We would just go to conventional lease financing, get a much lower interest rate.
It would be a lower interest rate? Okay, for municipalities and their facilities? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Floor's still open for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Here are none, back to council. Any further discussion? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Take Action on Resolution 978.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution Number 978, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, expressing the city's support for the Florida Solar United Neighborhoods, FL SUN Initiative of the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast of Florida and the Community Power Network, and the intention of the city to partner with those organizations to further adoption of solar energy in the city and Brevard County, providing an effective date. It's a reading of Resolution Number 978.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 978.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Bryumer, second by Councilman Osmer. This is a duplicate of, this is, the word change is what we're doing here?
No, this is a, basically a resolution that expresses our interest in assisting the Women League of Voters of the Space Coast of Florida's, Florida SUN Initiative, which is the Florida Solar United Neighborhoods Initiative, and this is basically, what it is, is a co-op, which allows people to buy solar panels en masse, and they handle all of the bidding, all of the purchasing, the selection, pretty much, all of the vetting of the companies, and allows people to enjoy not only not having to do all that work, but also a 20%, up to, even sometimes even exceeding 20% discount on the cost of the solar panels. So because this would be another strategy for our residents to be able to obtain solar at a reasonable cost, we would, we're definitely interested in partnering with the Women League of Voters on this initiative, and what we would do, what this would do is, is when we get the PACE up and running, we would, we're looking at a workshop and have the Women League of Voters there to introduce the co-op idea, to introduce PACE financing, have some solar contractors there, and kind of get our residents involved in looking at solar as an energy source. And we would also notify the community through the Beach Castor and Lorraine class, with the Women League of Voters is here, and she would be glad to answer any other questions that you have that are too specific for me.
Welcome.
Thank you, and congratulations for passing the Property Assessed Clean Energy Assessment. That is, just to speak briefly, that is going to give the low and moderate income folks in Satellite Beach a better opportunity to go solar. But, so, we're But, so, we're really pleased, the League, that you are entertaining this resolution. We have three goals here. We want to drive solar, help solar citizens through this group purchasing power, help them through that process, and create a community to really support good solar policy going forward. Here we are in the Sunshine State, yet only point one percent of our citizens have this asset. So, whatever questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions from Council?
I have none, because I got to hear a little bit of this from, at the electric car show there, and put a, a good presentation, and talked a little bit about that there. So, it was very interesting, again, I.
Okay, again, congratulations for leading on this issue, but I want to assure you, you're not going to be the only ones. I was hoping my own city of Cocoa would be here first, but they're entertaining the resolution next week. Then later in that week, I'm speaking with the City of Melbourne, and County Commissioner Kurt Smith is also very interested in supporting this.
They've all asked for copies of this, from the League of Cities.
Thank you, too.
Thanks.
If there's questions we can't answer, please help us. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 8.
John Perkins, 135 Maple. On both this topic and the previous one, PACE, if anybody goes to the city's website, to the homepage, almost dead center, there's an icon, Solar Satellite Beach. You go there, there's information on PACE, there's information on the Florida Sun, there's information on the inventory of systems that we already have in the system, how much they cost, how much they generate, what they cost per lot, who installed them, the locations where they are, the information's there if somebody wants to look for it. And again, this is something where it's optional. We're not forcing anything on anybody, we're just providing an opportunity. Orange County has had three of these co-ops. What they find is, you do one, you get fifty or a hundred people get interested, they get it, their neighbors look at it and say, gee, I didn't know. So you start another co-op. Orange County's on the third co-op. Sarasota just went out to bid, a local contractor here in Brevard County, one over there. I don't, I've heard different numbers, between something like a hundred and fifty or two hundred families are involved in that co-op. Another co-op is going live in January in Sarasota. And then we've got the one here, this probably is going to go live probably in October, November. So, this is going on, again, these are both opportunities. That's all the city's doing, saying, here it is, use it if you want.
Thank you, John. Floor's still open for Agenda Item 8. Here are no further public comment. Back to Council. Any further?
Yeah.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Agenda Item 9 is postponed till the October 5th, so therefore we'll move on to Agenda Item 10. And at this time, I'll open up a, a public hearing on Agenda Item 10. Jim?
Ordinance number 1125, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, vacating the north half of that certain alley right of way immediately south of Cinnamon Drive, and located between lots 117 and 118, Block 1, Flat of Michigan Beach, AKA 125 and 135 Cinnamon Drive, providing findings, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. The second reading of ordinance number 1125.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1125 on second reading.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, a further comment from Council, second reading. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10. The floor is now open.
Ron Drigoudis, Satellite Beach. I understand how the ordinance is written, and it is the second reading, but when we have some of these ordinances, can we get a little more clarity as citizens? I mean, located between lots 117 and 118, Block 1, Flat of Michigan Beach, AKA 125 and 135 Cinnamon Drive. Where is that, as far as east-west, or is that on the east side, west side?
Would you like more maps?
Well.
You can have this.
I don't, I don't need a map, but I'm just asking for a little more clarity here. There could be something written here, as far as.
Well, that's the legal description.
I understand that.
And so, in the, in the resolution.
I understand that.
The ordinance, the ordinance, the ordinance has to have the legal description in it.
Absolutely.
In our package, and then.
Absolutely.
That's on the internet. We have the maps as part of it.
Between the two.
Well, I'm looking for.
It's an exhibit of the ordinance, so.
I understand, but I'm looking for a little more efficiency, so we don't have to hut and peck for all this information. A little paragraph below this public hearing, and this ordinance, there could be a little paragraph there saying, it's on the east-west, just a little more clarity. It could be just IE or an extension, and that would greatly be a time saver, is what I'm concerned about. That's all I'm looking at. Thank you.
Public comments still open on Agenda Item 10, for the second reading of ordinance 1125. Please.
I too have a question. Can you tell us the streets that were, that is actually in between? Because I know Cinnamon, and it's a long road.
It's, it's between, right in between Cinnamon and Cassia.
Oh, okay. So we've got Cinnamon and Cassia. Is it like on.
And there's like, there's little alleys that run right behind the commercial properties.
I might be able to help here, where the old A-frame building is, or the New York Pizza.
There you go.
Okay. The back of that lot, at one time, there was an alley that stretched from One Street, Cassia, to Cinnamon. Went between what now, which is the two houses there.
Okay, so.
So we're vacating that portion of it. The portion directly behind New York Pizza was vacated before.
Oh, cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Public comments still open. Here are none. Bring it back to Council. Any further counsel?
Nope.
Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. We've gone on to Agenda Item 11, which I'll open up for another public hearing for the proposed FY 2016-17 budget, which includes two ordinances, Ordinance 1126 and Ordinance 1127. Jim?
Ordinance number 1126, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of advalorem taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of eight point one five one eight mils for fiscal year 2016-2017, providing an effective date, the second reading of ordinance number 1126. Ordinance number 1127, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, providing an effective date, this is second reading of ordinance number 1127.
Thank you, Jim. Frank, do you want?
That's what I was going to say, okay. Motion.
Yeah, a motion to adopt ordinance number 1126 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from Council? At this time, open up for pu, the comment on ordinance number 1126, portion of Agenda
Ron Drigoudis, Satellite Beach. I see the millage rate has gone down a little bit, and I guess everybody has been attempting to sharpen their pencils. I had full intent to hand, to come here during some of the budget hearings prior to this. However, other obligations to pay the taxes were obviously more important. What I'm concerned about is, and we have this millage rate, obviously it's a balanced I've seen over the last three, three years, four years, property values have increased. I hear one year, three hundred thousand additional in revenue, I hear another three hundred thousand in revenue, and the numbers just keep going up. They have been going up, and I know there were budget constraints in the past. And now we've got, based on some of the information I read in the budget, it appears that, once again, there's more revenues, and it's understandable. However, I look at the fact, is this not driving, this is not the only community that's doing this, but there are many communities that are reducing the budget a little bit, and coming down with a, a little bit of an adjustment, what, one point five percent on the advalorem. But is it driving pressure on increasing interest rates, in the big global picture for the United States? And then my other issue here is, a lot of the monies that were in the CRA project, or the CRA area, it seems like we find, the city has fine tuned the CRA, what they want to do, to the extent that monies are transferred over to the city. And one of my issues with that is, it almost seems like we're playing a shell game. As I mentioned earlier, the ADA compliance, perhaps that could have been a CRA funding project. And then we're going to get into the game later on of amending the budget and so forth, so that's going to be the second reading. But I've been here in years past, as the Council fully knows, and I can make all the suggestions I want, I'm not going to make a difference in three minutes. Thank you.
At this time, Agenda Part B of Agenda Item 11, the floor is still open for public comment. Please, sir.
Kelly Height, Lee Avenue. I'm probably a little behind the times here, but I noticed that, from the paper, that you're looking for three, basically three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar increase in taxes. And that's about a five-plus percent increase. Inflation's at two, and I'm just wondering, what am I going to get for my, these three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars?
Do you want to give us a talk, a talk on that, the increase?
Well, we have a ten million dollar budget, so three hundred thousand dollar increase is, is not five percent, that's more like.
Well, the taxes are going up. You're asking, you're getting another three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue from this.
So.
And that's what I'm going to pay taxes on.
You're going to pay taxes on the value of your home with the millage rate?
Yes, I understand.
So that, that's spread across ten thousand people. But, but what I was trying to say is, that's not a five percent increase in revenue. We have a ten million dollar budget, so, but we are asking for a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase in taxes, because to give employees raises, to deal with cost increases, like increased liability insurance, things like that, increased health insurance for employees, we have to have an increase in costs. So either we increase our revenues, or we cut a service.
Well, I'm just asking what kind of service I want to get for my money. That's all I want.
Yeah.
You tell me you're going to hire more police officers, or, you know, fire departments? I don't have any problem with that.
We provide fire service, recreation department services, you know, Public Works, all this.
And the other thing, I think, we've done the last few years, is come up with a capital asset plan. So we're not hit at one time with these big costs of repair and stuff. So this capital asset plan was put in effect, and we're trying to get caught up, you know, we didn't pave roads for over ten years.
Yeah, I know, very well.
What we're trying to do is make sure that we're well budgeted, we plan for the future, so that when these expenses occur, that we have the funding for.
Are part of, part of the enhancements of that, or we, we did add position over at Public Works to, you know, to deal with the Shell Street project. Some of the newer projects that we have come online that we now have to take care of. So Roosevelt is another one. So as we add projects like that, we have to maintain them, so we add.
Well, I understand that. I was just wondering, you know, if you're going to get to my street.
Hope to get to a lot of streets.
Yeah, what, what street are you on?
Lee.
Lee, oh, okay.
Yeah, it floods every time it rains.
I'm on Wilson's, so I totally fear your face.
Roosevelt and twenty-two streets this year, so, you know, it's definitely part of our budget. Prior, about every four years, we would have paving projects in the city. So we missed approximately two and a half.
I'm more interested in the drainings.
Well, I can tell you, we are too. It's one of the major things. And another reason, sir, why we take road projects very seriously, I don't want to dig up a road, repave it over old piping that's going to flood.
Well, I understand.
And we look at projects, and especially road projects.
Yeah.
It's critical we look at the project not as a repaving project, as much as a total project, to make sure that the piping, the stormwater on those streets that we paved are going to last. Some of the streets we just got done paving, hadn't been paved in forty years, so I've got to make sure that these pipes and the stuff.
Well, I agree with you.
And that's why we're trying to do, to get caught up in. The other expense and part of that is to make sure that this capital asset plan works.
Yeah, I just noticed we dumped seven hundred and fifty thousand more gallons of solar.
Infrastructure is an expensive deal, and we're trying to.
Okay.
Were you here for the, the, where we talked about, that Brevard County will be presenting the sewer utility issue at tomorrow's night, tomorrow night's meeting at the Gleason Community Center?
Well, I've kind of missed that.
Okay.
I heard part of it, but.
That'll be at six o'clock, and that original intent of that meeting was to talk about the lagoon, and the sources of pollution, and talk about the half percent sales tax proposal.
Yeah.
Now we added to that meeting, Brevard County Utilities will be talking about the sewer main break, and how they're going to fix that, and address that. So if you want to come to that meeting, you'll get a lot of questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comments still open.
Larry Whitney, Glenwood Avenue. I have a slightly different take on taxes and expenses, and I'd like to share that. It's probably too late for this fiscal year coming to do anything, but I would like to propose that, based on the fact that finances are doing better across the board, it's a general statement, revenues are, are better for the city, and so on and so forth, that we take a look at significantly increasing the asset plan, the asset program, for the following fiscal year, and accelerate some of these major programs that are way behind. But at the same time, I would like to see us, in my terminology, provide for accumulated depreciation for each one of these assets, so that as they come up in the future, the money's already, already there, and it doesn't become a sudden crisis. And that way, we get to manage the city on a much more effective basis. So I hope that makes sense to you.
It does. Thank you very much. Public comments still open? Here are no further. Bring it back for ordinance 1126. Any comment? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 1127.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1127 on second reading.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on ordinance 1127, Part C of Item 11. Here are none. Close the citizens' comment portion, and bring it back to Council. Further counsel?
Yeah.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Staff, Courtney, Jennifer, everyone that worked on the budget this year, thank you very much. I know you've worked hard, and I know you've worked hard on that. I know you've worked hard, and I know you've worked hard on that, the asset plan and so forth, and great job, and thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 12, discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1124. Jim?
Ordinance number 1124, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 50, Solid Waste, to reflect new solid waste contractor and new contract, deleting contract terms from ordinance, providing for conflicts, providing an effective date. First reading of ordinance number 1124.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1124 on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion from council? Open up at this time for public comment on Agenda Item 12. Hearing none, bring it back to council, Courtney and staff, great cost savings and long-term plan. Jim? Great job. Thank you. Thank you for negotiating, we're not to do for a while, I know we saved the citizens and the commercial aspect of this to our city, so.
This really was a home run, Courtney.
That was great, good job.
Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, this has opportunity to keep paying as we go on in years. Isn't we have that clause from the, the solid waste, that if another city gets a better deal?
Yes, we're going to be talking about Melbourne soon, so.
Yes, I had heard that, so, but I mean, this is something that, it's nice that it sets up, that it's not only taken care of today.
Right.
But has the opportunity to do better for the citizens as we go forward in years to come.
Also, the, the Big Belly Solar Compactors will be installed coming up?
I don't know, Miguel was on vacation, so. The representative from Waste Management was on vacation, so he'll get ahold of me next week, when he gets back, and we'll find locations at Hightower and Pelican for the Big Belly Compactors.
Yeah, they had to be constructed, so that's why it's taken so long, so they are, Waste Management now has them, and now we just have to get them installed.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Did we do public?
Um, yeah, we did.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any further comment? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Alan, thanks, hon. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1129. Jim?
Ordinance number 1129, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 26, Environment, by creating a new Article 8 entitled Environmental Protections, to include provisions prohibiting expanded polystyrene for end styrofoam at city events and special events on city property for which the city is a sponsor. Prohibiting the purchase of expanded polystyrene by city, creating Section 26-144, Purpose and Intent, Section 26-145, Definitions, Section 26-146, prohibiting the sale, use, and other activities regarding expanded polystyrene food service articles within the city, Section 26-147, prohibiting the purchase of expanded polystyrene by the city, providing for conflict clause, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. First reading of ordinance number 1129.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1129 on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council?
Just to, Courtney, so you're, you're certain that there's no budget impacts on this at all, that we can see?
No, we're basically providing an effective date that's long enough out, out to give the vendors time enough to understand, you know, how to comply. And really, it's an impact on us as a city, so, and we don't really purchase that much in terms of, you know, our, our use personally.
Right.
But it is really a large gesture to lead by example in, in the community.
Very good, okay.
Thank you.
I've actually had a few comments, and the only comments that I've heard on so far is everybody says, we can't believe we haven't done this already. Most people are very happy that I've heard say this, and said, it's about time, should have done this a long time ago. Between the foam and plastic bags, that's what I usually hear most comments about, is everybody says, why have we not done away with that yet? Those are the only comments I've got so far.
This came out of your Sustainability Board, they discussed this and recommended for you to, to begin leading by example in these small ways, as a way to start influencing and larger community. And I think Mindy Gibson, one of our board members, was one of the proponents of this.
At this time, open up for public, public, excuse me, comment on Agenda Item 13, Ordinance Hearing no citizens' comment, bring it back to council, further counsel?
No.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes. Yes, motion passes. To the Sustainability Board, Mindy, everyone, incredible board, coming out with great new ideas, keeping us cleaner and healthier, great board, and thank you for that. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, is the agenda for the October 5th meeting, as we've stated in the past. If you have any other items need to go on here, please see your city manager. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, Adoption of Minutes.
We're running off these, right?
Running off of them, yes.
Motion to approve the City Council Rugby Meeting Minutes of September 7th, 2016.
A motion by Councilman, Vice Mayor Breimer, second, uh, second by Councilman Osmer. Any discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. This time, any further business before council?
No, sir.
For the staff, on the budget and so forth, again, thank you very much, and at this time, meetings adjourned.